Good evening, everyone. Calling to order, the town of Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, April 16, 2019. Approval of the minutes. I don't know minutes tonight with respect to approving. We get right to public comment. Public comment. Hearing none. We're going to turn to the first item on the agenda. Volunteer recognition. Ladies and gentlemen of the town, those gathered here tonight, as you know, we've been engaged in a rather long journey with respect to the issue of the water company. And as a board, we thought it was only appropriate and fitting that we recognize the members of the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee for their tireless work, dedication, and devotion to the town on this issue. Each of these individuals, volunteers, giving up their own time, lending their substantial expertise to an issue that's perhaps one of the greatest issues that this town has ever and will ever consider. This will be joined on Monday, the 22nd, but we felt that it's appropriate now to recognize their efforts. So in keeping with that, I'd ask each of the four members that are present in the room tonight, that sat on this committee, to join us up front so that we can present a proclamation to each of you.
One at a time?
Probably going to do it out there so we can do photos. If you guys want to just stand one at a time?
Yeah, I'm going to do one at a time.
All three of you go up front and then I'll call them up.
Okay.
Then we get pictures. Carol, I'm thinking about you and pictures.
It might be with everyone together. It's one of your areas.
You know, I think it's appropriate that we read it. And it may take a little bit of time, but we've got it. The Board of Selectmen hereby issues this proclamation for the exceptional work performed by Jonathan R. Asher. Whereas you, Jonathan R. Asher, citizen volunteer, acting as a member of the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee over the last seven years, have superbly, capably, and unqualifiably served the citizens of the town of Hingham in the effort to provide the public with a full and substantive understanding of the issues surrounding the acquisition of the water company known as Aquarian. Whereas you have put forth the effort and time necessary to complete this project with leadership, determination, and enthusiasm while providing prudent fiscal management without compromising quality; and whereas, with a never-ending focus on the goal, you have performed your duties with skill, foresight, and patience while responding to the uninitiated with diligence, detail, grace, and good humor; and whereas you have surpassed all of the aspirations for this momentous effort with unparalleled discipline and solid judgment; and whereas this community has enjoyed the full measure of your leadership in this consequential effort of generational significance. Now therefore, we, Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, Karen A. Johnson, Selectmen of Hingham, proclaim our heartfelt gratitude and appreciation and thanks for all you have done on our behalf, and extend to you and your family a sincere well done on behalf of the town of Hingham. Signed, the 16th day of April, 2019. Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, Karen A. Johnson.
The Board of Selectmen hereby issues this proclamation for the exceptional work performed by Edward R. Siegfried. Whereas you, Edward R. Siegfried, citizen volunteer, acting as a member of the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee over the last seven years, have superbly, capably, and unquantifiably served the citizens of the town of Hingham in the effort to provide the public with a full and substantive understanding of the issues surrounding the acquisition of the water company known as Aquarian; and whereas you have put forth the effort and time necessary to complete this project with leadership, determination, and enthusiasm while providing prudent fiscal management without compromising quality; and whereas, with a never-ending focus on the goal, you have performed your duties with skill, foresight, and patience while responding to the uninitiated with diligence, detail, grace, and good humor; and whereas you have surpassed all of the aspirations for this momentous effort with unparalleled discipline and solid judgment; and whereas this community has enjoyed the full measure of your leadership in this consequential effort of generational significance. Now therefore, we, Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, and Karen A. Johnson, Selectmen of Hingham, proclaim our heartfelt gratitude, appreciation, and thanks for all you have done on our behalf, and extend to you and your family a sincere well done on behalf of the town of Hingham. Signed, the 16th day of October, 2019. Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, Karen A. Johnson.
Board of Selectmen hereby issues this proclamation for the exceptional work performed by Joshua C. Crumbles. Whereas you, Joshua C. Crumbles, citizen volunteer, acting as a member of the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee over the last seven years, have superbly, capably, and unquantifiably served the citizens of the town of Hingham in the effort to provide the public with a full and substantive understanding of the issues surrounding the acquisition of the water company known as Aquarian; and whereas you have put forth the effort and time necessary to complete this project with leadership, determination, and enthusiasm while providing prudent fiscal management without compromising quality; and whereas, with a never-ending focus on the goal, you have performed your duties with skill, foresight, and patience while responding to the uninitiated with diligence, detail, grace, and good humor; and whereas you have surpassed all of the aspirations for this momentous effort with unparalleled discipline and solid judgment; and whereas this community has enjoyed the full measure of your leadership in this consequential effort of generational significance. Now therefore, we, Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, and Karen A. Johnson, Selectmen of Hingham, proclaim our heartfelt gratitude, appreciation, and thanks for all you've done on our behalf, and extend to you and your family a sincere well done on behalf of the town of Hingham. Signed, the 16th day of April, 2019. Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, Karen A. Johnson.
The Board of Selectmen hereby issues this proclamation for the exceptional work performed by Robert M. Higgins. Whereas you, Robert M. Higgins, citizen volunteer, acting as a member of the Water Company Acquisition Study Committee over the last seven years, have superbly, capably, and unquantifiably served the citizens of the town of Hingham in the effort to provide the public with a full and substantive understanding of the issues surrounding the acquisition of the water company known as Aquarian; and whereas you have put forth the effort and time necessary to complete this project with leadership, determination, and enthusiasm while providing prudent fiscal management without compromising quality; and whereas with a never-ending focus on the goal, you have performed your duties with skill, foresight, and patience while responding to the uninitiated with diligence, detail, grace, and good humor; and whereas you have surpassed all of the aspirations for this momentous effort with unparalleled discipline and solid judgment; and whereas this community has enjoyed the full measure of your leadership in this consequential effort of generational significance. Now therefore, we, Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, and Karen A. Johnson, Selectmen of Hingham, proclaim our heartfelt gratitude, appreciation, and thanks for all you have done on our behalf, and extend to you and your family a sincere well done on behalf of the town of Hingham. Signed, the 16th day of April, 2019. Paul K. Healy, Mary Ann Power, Karen A. Johnson.
I know, Paul, this is your last go-around at Selectmen, and you're going to go home and get your fishing rod all oiled up and ready to go. However, it's not enough just to say thank you, Paul, so I have 72 pages of stuff here. It's not enough to say thank you, but I'll try, okay? Thank you for all your years of service to the town of Hingham on the planning board and Selectmen, okay? You have provided leadership with integrity and fairness, always with the town of Hingham in your heart. I personally thank you for your good counsel. You have made Hingham a better place to live, okay? I know it's a honeydew list ahead, but best of luck, and thank you so much, Paul. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Joseph Beerworth, who couldn't join us tonight, is also going to receive a similar proclamation with our thanks. Joe is part of this committee and works so well with his team. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Smiling, all stars.
Thank you.
Thanks, sweetie.
Oh, it was very nice.
and sidewalk closure related to Sixth Station Street. Do we have somebody here for that?
Susan, you want to come in?
Counsel?
Ambassador Henderson, I'm presenting Mr. Falconeri to us this evening, and his landscape architect, Sean Pappitch. In my letter, which I wrote on January 22nd, I outlined four objectives of work to be done in the right-of-way, consisting of installation of brick sidewalks, landscaping and shrubbery, handicap ramps, resetting of a certain amount of curbing, and controversial, somewhere to be placed bike rack, which will be decided in the future. So rather than elaborating further as I did later, I think I'll let Sean go over the plan, and he can explain in detail what the objectives are. Thank you.
Can I be away from the microphone?
No, you can.
That's not a portable one. I'm trying to do it from a distance.
Well, I'm Sean Pappitch. Sean Pappitch, Landscapework Architecture, 222 North Street in Hingham. So the improvements and the modifications that we're looking to make as a part of the project at Sixth Station Street, if that on, you do have a color-rendered plan.
We do.
Big letters on it, big numbers on it.
Appreciate that.
Always helpful.
And Richard had wrote a letter that described each of these points where the improvements were going to be. Number one was the brick walkway in the right-of-way. There'll be a brick walkway that matches all of the other brick walkways downtown, City Hall pavement. And so we've got that wrapping from North Street wrapping around on Station Street and down around to the southern part of the property. Let me know, I can point these out on the large plan at any point. I can certainly do that. That's number one. Number two, inside the right-of-way, as a part of this, you're going to have some lawn area as well as some shrubs. And you'll see that on kind of the top part of that drawing, top part of that page. Number two, shrubs and ground cover. Number three, you're going to have architectural access board and ADA compliant ramps added North Street and Station Street intersection, as well as down on the south part of the property along Station Street on the entrance into the parking areas. So that is within the right-of-way. Number four, on North Street, we're going to be doing new granite curbing that'll be right against the street. And wrapping around onto Station Street will also be some new. And then it transitions to resetting the existing granite curb, and that's just back about a foot and a half in one, foot and a half to two feet as you wrap around down on South, or Station Street, excuse me. There's kind of elements, number four, number five. And then number six is the intention to do a bike rack in front of the retail unit all along North Street on that expanded brick area. It's really almost a little courtyard in front there. And so the intent is to do a bike rack. The intent is also to talk with Public Works on the style of what that bike rack needs to be. You see not many bike racks in downtown. You see a couple of different styles, some fixed, some that are movable. And I'm not sure either one that's downtown is actually very good, to be honest. So it might be a third one. Probably going to get myself into trouble saying that. Won't be the first time. You want me to point those out on the plan, if it's easier, or if you can tell from the drawing?
Yeah, I think it's.
Barely clear?
Clearly marked.
Tough to have the numbers.
Okay, good. If you had any other questions about the specific work on the.
Questions for my colleagues.
Just, Sean, landscape maintenance, is that going to be a sort of a regular part of the building, kind of building maintenance? Will be taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay. You're not going to let the ivy grow in the interior of the.
That's right.
Something new.
It's an interesting feature. I don't know if it was intentional, but it was an interesting.
And the Public Works, Tree and Park, will be consulted on the nature of the shrubs and things so that, you know, they're comfortable with sightlines, everything else?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're really having an issue with any of the site distance that we're dealing with. We went through that when we were going through everything with zoning.
Okay.
With planning board. I think we're in pretty good shape with the site distance triangles.
Great.
You mentioned in my opening that the whole zoning and planning has already been my end of this project.
Okay, that's, yeah, thank you.
Everything is staying pretty low at those intersections with the parking lot and certainly along North and Station Street.
Yep, thank you.
Is there something you'd like to add, Counsel?
So Tom had asked me to consolidate the various board staff comments. So that involves, the planning board had submitted some comments, they had just reserved in their permit that these improvements were subject to approvals because anything inside the right-of-way is not on the planning board's purview. So I got, there was a letter that had been submitted by Gordon Carr that was supplemented by an email by Barry Savage Dunham. I spoke at length to Randy Sylvester. Chief Olson also had some comments, not about these improvements, but about the sidewalk closure, which is the second half of what you're discussing tonight. And then Roger Fernandez, who had been tied up last week, contacted me today to talk about streetlights. And he had, he had thought, because I think he had talked to someone on the development team maybe a few months ago, he had thought that they were incorporated, but they weren't called out in the letter or on the plan. So we had mentioned it to Mr. Falconeri tonight. I, you know, he hasn't had a lot of time to respond to that. I just have a question, Sean, since you're here. And Tom actually caught this, I confess I didn't. Near, on the rant, right, well, it's not on this plan, but on the plan that you emailed to us, there were little white circles, and we don't know was that intended to be. I don't know. Keep taking.
It was like little white circles.
Tom caught them. I don't know where these intended to be, street lamps maybe? Because they were on the plan that got submitted for tonight, but they're not labeled, no?
No, they're not. That graphic that was on the.
Okay, all right.
That graphic was, that was on the engineer's plan, carried through on ours.
So Roger Fernandez mentioned that if the town, if this was part of the town project, they would not have this long a stretch of sidewalk without any street lamps. I asked him how many he thought would be necessary. He said, you know, a minimum two, but, I mean, he was comfortable with two.
Is it on North Street only, or is that?
No, I think the placement would have to be determined by DPW at the time. So because they're not pointed out here, I think, you know, I'm not exactly sure, I don't want to speak for DPW, but.
I'm sorry, Susan, are you saying that's a condition of the plan?
Well, no, well, so this is not, this was not raised in the materials that you received for tonight's meeting, but it is a recommendation that came from Roger today. So we apologize for the last insertion of that comment, the last-minute insertion. But if for the, for the town to have this long a stretch without street lamps, it would not be consistent with the lighting and pedestrian safety in the downtown. And once the bricks put in, nobody's going to want to be ripping it up at that point.
Right.
So, you know, Roger has, had asked that that be discussed tonight as a potential addition to the work. And now we're putting the applicant on the spot here, but I don't know if you're, if they're ready to respond to that.
One thing I'd just like to add to that is, you know, as we talked about this project, at least up at our level, and I've talked with each of you individually at different points about this project and proposed projects on this site in the past, is that, you know, one important nature of the proper development on this site is the economic tie-in from the harbor to the square. And this is, this is a linchpin property, so we want to make sure that, in my opinion, that it be well-lit and accessible from the harbor to the square, which had always been, I think, a big part of the consideration.
And frankly, I think that if streetlights wouldn't come up and that parcel were developed, we would hear from residents and patrons who might ask.
Agreed.
I tend to think that, you know, on North Street, it's obvious with respect to the need, and perhaps the hook on Station Street can, the applicant can certainly, some kind of lighting that perhaps is attached to the building that might illuminate sidewalks without, I can't remember, any additional expense.
I'd just say that, I think there is a condition, yeah, there's a condition related to the site plan for a photometric plan, but I think, Paul, as you may be aware, the planning board seeks with its photometric plans to make sure that the lighting stays on the site.
Yeah, doesn't spill.
And doesn't spill. So I think that the intention on the planning board site was that any of the lighting on the building would be, you know, the shaded lights that were interior to the site, so that wouldn't necessarily address the pedestrian issue.
And is there access, is there access to electrical, you know, through conduit? Is there access in the right-of-way to?
Well, what Roger told me tonight is that it would have to be brought from wherever the last light is on North Street, it would, it would be extended.
Through conduit, underground?
Yeah.
That whole area is underground, yeah.
Okay. So I guess, are we talking about digging up stuff that's outside this property in order to bring, bring the electrical connection to the property?
I can't answer that question.
Okay. I mean, I don't know if you think it's a big, big deal for you. I think it's a big deal for us that we get some lighting around the project.
I think it's an important element. I think there might be some question that I would have, and it's not, it's, I'm not privy to the information as much as maybe some of the other folks on the project team would be, is responsibility of that lighting or bringing power to those lights. So if there was already a sidewalk in existence today as there is, it's not in great shape. Most of that property is not in great shape, but what's in the public right-of-way right now still has walkway, if I'm not mistaken. Should there not have already been a streetlight there for that connection? To what degree, and we even haven't had this conversation, this is coming just from me alone, because we just heard about it tonight, is what responsibility is that for the property owner, in this case, Matthew, or responsibilities that are shared with Public Works would be the question I would have.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a more for private information.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, yep.
What Roger did say to me is that part of the reason why this has been left the way it is, is because for the last few years, there was always a, there was going to be a project happening, and for the town to put all that work into the perimeter and then potentially have it have to be pulled up for, to bring in utilities or other construction related to the site, so the town did not put in those improvements because they were waiting on a project. They didn't know it would be your project, but they were waiting on a project that kept being, you know, floated for this site. And so for the, if the town had put in the full sidewalk, all of those, you know, the lights, everything else, and then a developer came in to do it, it might have kind of ended up ripping up or damaging a lot of it anyway, so they, they did not do it when the rest of the, on North Street was done. And that's why they're not there now.
You're the guy.
Mr. Falconeri, what's your view?
So I agree with the sidewalks need to be done, and whether the town was intending on doing that and just how long it away, I mean, we're, we're fully accepting of that cost and doing that work to improve that whole corner.
Perfect.
Streetlights are a curveball, but we're just letting up, you know, where that conduit goes, a gentleman people have to get involved, and that's a little bit more involved than it is for quite frankly. I'm not sure where the.
Yeah, and I guess I, yeah, no, I know he needs lights.
You need lights.
He needs lights, but one, one question I guess I have is whose responsibility would it, would it be to make sure that he can get the electrical hookup, not a technical term, to his property line? Like, is that on us?
Doesn't the light company have some kind of power box in the corner there anyways?
It is, it's a transformer, but I don't think they would pull off of that.
So Roger's saying pulling off the last, right.
Pulling off those lights.
Because, I mean, well, whatever.
Is this something you want to pull back on in terms of, of oh here, until that question is sorted out?
Yeah. I mean, the problem is the timing, what your timing is, because we don't, we have town meeting, right? I don't know when our next meeting is after that. That's, that would be the question.
My concern is that, when the vote was held up, because one of the last issues was the permission from this board to do the landscaping and brickwork on the tunnel cap. And I don't know what happened, but it actually, Mr. Clancy, we didn't give the building permit without your permission to do the work, and that delayed for six to 10 months. And so I hate to be putting it off because.
Well, the tunnel cap, I mean, the tunnel cap is his own world, right? Like, this is, this is a little, I hear you, but this is a little different than the tunnel. A lot of that was, my recollection on the board was that, that there was some approval needed from the MBTA that was outside of, kind of outside of this process.
He was an impediment to the building from that side, and it was, I can understand about, and I'm sure it would be in this case as well.
I have an idea that might work, if you guys wanted to consider it. And obviously, Matt, you obviously would have the consent to the idea. So part of my concern is that the DPW and engineering don't have an appropriation, obviously, was this, this kind of work wasn't considered in their budget. But I've been, I talked to Roger tonight to get a sense of what the cost would be for these two streetlights if needed, and he was saying they were a couple of grand apiece. And he was saying they were a couple of grand apiece, plus whatever tie-in work was necessary, the conduit and the, and the, the electrical work for connecting them. I'm just wondering if maybe we can come to an agreeable condition on a cost not to exceed for that effort. And then the town could pick up the difference. He picks up what, what works towards that goal. Call it, you know, $6,000 or something, two, two for the lights and then figure two to connect, that might be sufficient. And if it's another $1,000 or $2,000, then the town would pay that balance. If that works for you guys, just an idea.
Well, if, if that works with you and my colleagues are happy with it, we don't want to hold the project up for sure.
Because otherwise, my fear, Matt, would be otherwise the delays that might occur as a result. And I know that's what you don't want. But I'm also recognizing that this is a last second curveball for Matt, and that's not how we normally do things.
So an amount not to exceed, and then if it were to exceed that amount, the town would step in?
Right. It's for two lights, it's not going to be...
No, no, I'm just trying to...
Yes, no, understood, yeah, yeah.
I guess I, I would just want to, I'm assuming you would have some conversation with Roger after this and...
Yeah, but they're going to have their own cut sheets, facts, and we, we have him approved and everything. There'll be a process between the two of you.
Okay, okay. And Susan, putting these lights now in the project doesn't disturb any of the prior board's approvals, right? Like...
No, so the, what they're referring to on the delay and as far as getting building permits and that type of thing is the planning board site plan review approval has a condition that it's subject to them receiving all the necessary approvals for, for this. So they don't need to go back to the board because anything that's in the right of way is within the Board of Selectmen's purview. But they have to satisfy the condition of having the approval in whatever form the selectmen elect to give it in order for them to proceed with the project. My numbering's off here as it is.
Item six.
Yeah. Well, I, I would probably, the numbering's off anyway, I just realized, there's two number fours. It would probably be number four, and then we would change the numbers sequentially after that to five, six, seven.
Okay. So you're going to, you'll, you'll propose some language?
While we're doing that, does anybody from the audience want to say anything? Well, Mr. Watson has a question. Be careful.
I've just been very, I've just been very impressed.
Jim Watson, 291 Rockland Street. I've just been very impressed lately with all the new lights in the square that have the period style, but are opaque at the top, so they shine only down, you know, avoiding a light sky. And I'm just assuming that the project will have the same design lights?
We anticipate that that will be emulated.
Same thing, like the other ones.
Right.
Thank you.
In a different way.
Just say, well, council's working on this language. You know, I think we have a shared interest in wanting this project to get going. And I appreciate the cooperative way that we're kind of working together on this. And, you know, Mr. Falconeri, I just want to take the opportunity to tell you that the Lincoln Building looks beautiful.
Beautiful, really beautiful.
And, you know, every time I'm driving into the square, I'm in the square with people. I've heard nothing but, but good things about the building. And we know that there were a lot of challenges with that. And again, we had to work in a cooperative manner on sidewalks and dumpsters and, you know, other things like that. So we look forward to an equally successful project at, at Six Station Street.
And so do we, are we talking about the sidewalk closure in connection with this as well?
Yeah, well, yeah, so that's a separate discussion and a separate vote.
Vote, okay. So I'll let you finish writing that.
Yeah, take me one...
As she finishes that, well, just to piggyback on what Mary said, you know, I had the opportunity to walk down there with Michelle the other day. And it's not just the building, Matt, it's the, the, the cap up back is, it's been reclaimed, it's usable again. You know, that was in, that was in poor condition for quite a while. And it just looks beautiful. It really does, yeah.
It's coming together.
Yeah, it is.
It's nice to see a responsive developer.
Keep it at that end of the table, please.
I just read one of those, I just read one of those proclamations.
Karen recognizes those kind of edits running down.
Exactly what you're getting, yeah, right.
All the lawyers are going to have to do this.
Would you like a motion?
I would.
Well, I got one for you. All right. I move that pursuant to Hingham General Bylaws Article 10, the board approves certain improvements within the right-of-way of North Street and Station Street as described in the letter of Attorney Richard Henderson dated January 23, 2019, and annotated preliminary landscape plan revised March 6, 2019 by Sean Pappich. The improvements, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the brick walkway and vertical granite curbing modifications, number one, four, and five, shall be installed with town-approved materials and to town standards. Number two, AAB, ADA compliant ramps shall be constructed in accordance with applicable accessibility laws and regulations. Number three, the type and location of the proposed bike rack shall be subject to approval by the Department of Public Works prior to installation. Number four, the improvements shall include the installation of two street lamps consistent with town materials and standards, provided that the cost to the applicant shall not exceed $6,000 within, with the remainder of such cost to be borne by the town, if any. Number five, the improvements shall be subject to the inspection by and approval of the Board of Selectmen or its designee, except as expressly provided herein with respect to the landscaped areas as herein defined. Upon the town's written approval of the improvements, the improvements shall become the responsibility of the town. Number six, approval of the installation of the landscaped areas in the right-of-way, modification number two, the landscaped areas shall constitute a revocable, non-exclusive license and shall not be deemed to confer easement rights or any other right or interest in, in the right-of-way. The landscaped areas shall be maintained by the owner of Six Station Street, its successors and assigns, where am I? The owner, in a neat and presentable manner. This license is revocable by the town in whole or in part at any time, with or without cause, upon written notice to the owner. Upon such revocation, the area of the right-of-way comprised of the landscaped areas shall, to the extent of the revocation, become the responsibility of the town and may be modified by the town in the town's sole discretion. Number seven, the town shall not be responsible or liable for any damage to the property or injury to persons arising from the claim of any person during the installation of the improvements. By undertaking the improvements, the owner shall be deemed to have agreed to indemnify and hold the town harmless with respect to any costs or damages, including without limitation the town's cost of enforcement, enforcement of this license and reasonable attorney, attorney's fees and costs arising from the claim of any person alleging personal injury or damage to property as a result of A, the installation or condition of the improvements prior to the town's approval thereof, and B, the condition of the landscaped areas within the maintenance, with the maintenance, the landscaped, the condition of the landscaped areas with the maintenance, the landscaped areas, so long as the license remains in effect. Something's missing, but...
Question, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next. Closure? Good job.
Do we need to do something with that?
The cycle closure?
No, the, that last sentence?
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
The condition...
My condition is that...
We could maybe do it as...
Oh, I think it's with respect to the maintenance, with respect to the maintenance of the landscaped areas. It's, so the, the idea here is, on the hardscape, once it's done, it's the, and it's been approved by the town, it's the town's.
Yep.
The landscape area, Randy's concern was, grass needs to be taken care of.
Right.
And that's not something DPW want to be responsible for.
Right.
They have expressed interest in maintaining that area, so, so the indemnification language goes to the installation of the improvements at the time they're happening. So someone gets injured while that's being installed.
Yep.
And B goes to the condition of the landscaped areas. If someone says, you know, they didn't maintain that and I tripped and fell, and they, and someone sues the town for tripping and falling on the grass, then that would be, so it, it's going to...
So you, you just need, with respect to the maintenance...
Maintenance of the landscaped areas.
So Sally, can you, we'll give you this language.
I'll give you, I, I just, I just, I just marked it, so I'll give it, I'll give you the correction.
Right, right, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that was, the next piece of it is the, is the sidewalk closure. And there's a set of three plans that you all received. The first one shows the fence within, this is phase one, shows the fence within the property line, so there's no relief needed there. The second one is a, a partial, a partial closure of the sidewalk on the North Street side. And you can see that, that kind of, there's a long dash line that's skinny. And then there's the fatter, shorter dash line, that's the fence. So it's just outside the property line. That's proposed for over a year, about 13 or so months, six weeks and then 52 weeks. So that's a little over a year. And then the final phase four, on the last page, this is all the work you all have just been talking about, which would require a temporary full closure of the sidewalk. And so the recommendation, there's a recommend, recommended vote with respect to the, kind of the, the less intensive sidewalk closure with some conditions. But then there's a condition that they return to the Board of Selectmen before the full sidewalk closure, because that's going to take a lot more pedestrian coordination, that type of thing.
That's what I was going to say. We almost need to cross people, right?
Right, because there's a, there's a crosswalk right before the Station Street. But if people need to cross here and then they need to get back over...
Yeah.
There's no crosswalks.
Yeah.
So I think that's going to require more coordination with the Police Department and DPW.
Yeah.
And it's over a year away. So the thought was that prior to commencement of phase four, the applicant would come back to work on the logistics with police beforehand.
You have a better sense of your timing and...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Makes sense, yeah.
It might be sooner or it might be a little behind.
Right. Yep. So the, the one open point is it has here four weeks and then 52 weeks. So there's a, in the proposed vote that you have in front of you, there's a bracket right now. When, when a similar vote was taken for the Lincoln Building, the, the time that commenced for this, the closure was issuance of a building permit, kind of as the trigger to start the period running. And so that's been proposed, if that works. But then the, whether the board wanted to say for a certain number of months, or if you wanted to put in a date certain, after which the applicant would have to come back to extended beyond that. But, I mean, they are proposing here about 13 and a half months.
62 weeks? Is that right?
Yeah, it's 58, 58 weeks for phase two and three.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know, however the board wants to insert the...
So they don't need our approval for phase one?
Not for phase one, right.
Got it, okay.
Motion?
Well, do you, we need a timeframe. I don't know if you want a date or a number of months from the date on the issuance of the...
So have you, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I, I mean, maybe this is all just preliminary, but I think as, as phase two and three come along, we're going to want to make sure that the downtown merchants on that end of North Street in particular, that could be, you know, affected by pedestrian traffic along there, just know that this is going on and understand the timing and all of that stuff. You know, similar to the square, I think we just wanted to make sure everybody had a clear understanding of when stuff was going to close down and how people were going to access.
Sure.
And does that, does this, would phase two or three affect any parking or no? Because it's all...
No, it's really all contained within these hash lines.
Okay.
Right, and so what Randy had asked for, and it's a condition to the vote, that during this period, that four feet of width be left on the sidewalk. So the fence is not all the way to the edge of the sidewalk, there's, you can see the arrows going back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, so people could go, okay.
And Randy thought it's pretty wide there, the sidewalk, it's much wider than anywhere else on North Street. He thought four feet would give them enough room to be into the sidewalk, but enough room for, to meet accessibility, so someone on a wheelchair could still get by on the sidewalk, even with the fence partially on the sidewalk.
Okay. And if the date, the, the date that commences the period would start the period with respect to phase one as well, or, so, so they pulled a building permit?
Right.
They're going to start working on the phase one piece of this. That's going to take a month, unless I'm misunderstanding this. So they're a month in, and then they, then they need an additional 58 weeks. But it's still, it's still commencing.
That's not accurate.
Yep.
So basically, we get a permit, we start shortly thereafter, and those first, I mean, it's been roughly four weeks of demolishing existing structure and repurposing.
Yep.
All of which is not impacting any of the sidewalk whatsoever, as well on our property. And then starting at the beginning of phase two, we have to, in order to get our foundation in, we have to move it to the existing sidewalk. But as Susan was saying, at no point will we ever...
Completely close that.
...impede, you know, we'll, we'll preserve 48 inches or better.
Okay.
At all times.
Okay.
Until the time comes for rip, all of those sidewalks up and down, at a point unknown at this point.
Yep. I just want to make sure if the building, pulling the building permit starts the clock, that we're, whatever date we set accommodates that month where they...
Which would include phase one, I think.
Right, so it's more like 62 weeks in total, like in terms of setting that date out, you know what I'm saying?
Fifteen months would build an extra two weeks of leeway. So if you just said 15 months from the date of the, the issuance of the building permit, that gives them that, the extra two weeks to at the back end.
I guess where I, I'm coming from on this is, you know, had we not had the experience we had with you before, I would be a little less confident in granting you this 15 months. But I also feel like if we had some questions, you'd come back and talk to us. And so I don't, I don't know what...
I'm right, I'm right with you, yeah. I, you're, you're in meeting rooms a lot, so...
We know where they're finding.
I would, I would say that the cooperation and trust that, that we've established with one another is, I think, giving the board confidence to, to do this for 15 months.
Because otherwise, it's a long, you know, it's a long time, right?
Agreed.
Okay.
I don't have anything to add to that.
Make a motion. Please.
I'll make a motion that pursuant to Hingham General Bylaws Article 10, the board approved the request of Falconeri Construction to close a portion of the public sidewalk with the public way of North Street directly abutting the property at Six Station Street as shown on the plan, site phasing plan, phase two and three construction plan dated January 8, 2019, prepared by Strachalovsky Architecture, Inc., for a period commencing as of the date of issuance of the building permit for this property and continuing for 15 months, subject to the following conditions. One, a minimum width of four feet shall be maintained between the fence and the curb along North Street. Two, an extension of the extent of sidewalk closure or the period of sidewalk closure shall be, shall be subject to further approval by the Board of Selectmen. Three, all dumpsters, construction materials and construction vehicles shall be located within the fenced area on the site and not permitted within any public right-of-way or the Station Street parking lot. And number four, all construction worker vehicles shall be restricted to the striped parking spaces along the railroad right-of-way in the Station Street parking lot.
Second.
There?
Aye.
I'll just note one last thing that was in your notes, but it's not, not something that the board has to take action on. There were a number of recommendations with respect to dealing with traffic calming issues, potentially a parking space on North Street that came out of the planning board review process and the peer review process with Jeff Dirk. And in talking to Randy, his recommendation is that all of those recommendations for review be referred to the traffic committee. And the traffic committee can, if they think anything should happen, could refer it to the Board of Selectmen for action. So that, that was the last piece of it.
Makes sense, thank you. And Susan, I just wanted to thank you for coordinating with Roger and Randy, because I think that the conditions in the vote anticipate much of what we would have been asking for. So I, I think it was helpful to have this all organized like this and made for a much more efficient use of everyone's time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have merchants parking lot. Conversation goes off a little bit. Maybe you can take Senator O'Connor and Representative Machino, you know, hot water. Mike, can you join us at the table here? See the here? He's so kind to join us.
Thanks, Susan.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you too. We have a couple pass-ots here. Just pass them down. As always, thank you for the opportunity to come and address the Board. We wanted to just provide you, as the budget process is really kicking into high gear with the Governor's Budget out and the House Budget coming out a week or so ago, you know, we wanted to kind of give an update in regards to where we are at the state level. Just for opening sort of statements, I think that the state's in really good shape financially. And the thing that we try to do the most is invest in our communities. I think that, as both former local elected officials, myself and Representative Moschino, we take that as one of our biggest financial priorities, is to make sure that we send as much revenue back to the cities and towns that we represent as we possibly can. Because we know that when it comes down to it, where the rubber meets the road is at the local level. And that's where you actually see those dollars that you pay in state income tax, the state sales tax, and that we get from the federal government, start to actually trickle down and make real impacts in people's lives, whether it be at the foundation of K through twelve education, our roads, our public safety. These are the things that really matter to both of us, and we wanted to make sure that our budget basically starts with that foundation, that our communities are as strong as they possibly can. And confidently, I can say in the two budgets that we've seen so far and the Senate Budget due out next month, that these, that these do that. The budget overall, we took a very conservative approach, only increases one and a half percent from previous fiscal years, so from nineteen to twenty. But there's, as we'll get into the presentation, there's more than that in increases to our, to our local communities. So I'll pass it over to Representative Moschino, my partner in government. And we know that Representative Murphy, who wanted to be here tonight, couldn't be. He had some family obligations, but he does send obviously his support for all the work that is being done here in Hingham. And Representative Moschino.
That's all right. Don't break it.
There you go.
Don't break it. No, I just also wanted to say, it's always good to be here. It's always good to be with our selectmen and our selectwomen, especially a town that is so well-run. And it's a pleasure to work with each and every one of you and with all of the town staff. So we are in full budget mode on the House side. Budget came out last Wednesday. We filed a series of amendments, I think it was something like, it was a crazy amount, like fifteen hundred amendments, all looking at the various components of, of the budget and where to add things in and to bring things up into what we consider to be balanced. But I have to say that in looking at the House's pass on the budget, it's really, and I would say this was the case last year with the budget as well, is that it's very much focused on people and services, really getting the money back into the towns, really enabling, enabling through local aid to really do the work of the communities. And I think you saw that across the budget last session from both the House and the Senate, and you'll see that, I think, again this way. Right now, I would say that, I would agree that we've taken a very conservative approach towards the consensus revenue figure. That's done early, or actually, it's done at the end of the year last year, and I think that it's a good number, and you'll see us sticking very closely to that. It represents a modest increase, attracts with the kinds of revenues that we've seen coming in. And I'm sure you saw in the paper that the House has excluded what they consider to be some of the more controversial things like the gaming. Because for us, it's important that when we put that budget out, that it be grounded, it be real, and that we not subject the communities to ninety cuts if we don't need to, that it really be something that you can rely on.
Just getting past the first slide, the second one just basically outlines the budget schedule at the state level, where the Governor's Budget comes out basically right at the start of the new year in January. House Budget, as Representative Moschino said, comes out in April. The Senate Budget's due out probably sometime the middle of May, with budget debate to go on the week after that. And then as we consolidate the two budgets, three members of the House and three members of the Senate get together and hash out all the differences between basically the three budgets that we have. And we hope to have an operating budget signed by July one in order to go into effect.
So there've been, just to give a little recap, from past budgets, we were able to secure for Hingham, one hundred and eleven thousand for emergency response coordination, forty thousand for a multipurpose tractor, sidewalks, snow removal, twenty thousand for safety upgrades for Hingham Public Schools, fifty thousand for structural repairs at Whitney Wharf. And those are just some examples of some of the things that we're able, in addition to the local aid, to be able to bring back down to the districts each year.
And it's one of those things that, these are basically earmarks, for lack of a better term. But we always reach out to local communities and say, how can we help? We know that there are budgets with fixed costs and pension liability and health insurance and everything else that you have to deal with inside of making up and constructing the budget that you have to work with. We know that there are some capital items that may say, oh, we'll wait till next year. And what we try and do is fill that void and say, oh, well, how about, you know, we can try and see if we can get some money from the state. And they're never going to be, in my opinion, you know, really huge, big-ticket items that will come from the budget specifically to communities, but they're the things that, in my opinion, matter and would have to have spent town resources on, you know, down the line. So we try and expedite that process and take some of the burden financially off the community.
And I think one of the things we've noticed is that with, with the changing up, at least on the House side of the Chairman of House Ways and Means, they're really looking to, if there's an item that really should be going through a grant program. It's the strong preference of the administration to have you apply through that way. So these are the kinds of things that really reflect, I don't want to say one-offs, but really those small items that's hard for you to make space for in your budget, because you have a lot of pressing demands as well. And so they're really meant to be those either seed money for great things, or, you know, those, those things that don't always, that are needed, but don't always get that priority. So towards this end, I, after speaking to your town manager, we did put in a hundred thousand dollars for planning equipment purchases, staff training to enhance the safety of municipal buildings, including Town Hall, DPW, other, other, other buildings. And then the Senator will also include one on the Senate side.
Yes, and we, right now, the earmark that we're looking to secure is the one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars for Hingham Public Schools to upgrade and expand security features. But there's actually a grant round that just closed, a seven million dollar grant round with the Department of Public Safety, that we worked with the community and applied for. Four of the eight communities that I represent were able to apply for this. And the last time, we talked to Secretary Pfizer and the Secretary, and the Education Secretary, and he had mentioned that he believes that there was only around eight million dollars of applications that were sent in. So the odds are looking very good that, that this would be something that comes across. And there's also, to this end, so if that would happen, then, and the grants will be announced prior to the Senate Budget, we can then reassess and hopefully tackle, you know, something else. But one of the other things is that school safety is going to be a major priority of the administration, as well as it should be. And there's already conversations inside of the Governor's Budget in particular of thirty million dollars over the next three years through sales tax modernization to be used specifically for one-time expenditures on upgrading security at schools and also increasing training of personnel and law enforcement as well. So there's, there's going to be, in my opinion, many bites of the apple when it comes to improving school safety in Hingham.
One thing to just be aware of is, I don't know if it affects it, but our buses are leased. So I don't, I don't quite know how that potentially affects any sort of security upgrades to the assets themselves. John Ferris will be a good person to help on that.
Yeah, and we dealt with that in Cohasset too, where they lease their buses as well. And a lot of it's now these three sixty cameras in the buses that are sort of what communities want to have seen in their buses, that monitor everything. So we'll definitely look into see what the, sort of how we can...
Didn't know if contractually there were any, any extra, you know, levels of approval or any, any extra complexities.
Yeah, makes sense.
That's a good point. So always unrestricted aid is always a number one priority. And so this year, we've seen true to form, an increase over last year. Globally, it's twenty-nine million. But for Hingham, we included on the slide that we're looking at forty-four thousand dollar increase. So it's really about two-point-seven percent over last year for the unrestricted funding. So that's a good, that's a nice number to have come in and to be able to rely on as we're moving forward.
And then Chapter Ninety, nothing new with this. The only time that we saw the increase was the first year the Governor came in with a three hundred million. Representative Moschino and I have been full-fledged advocates of increasing this number every single time that this comes about. But I think that this goes with sort of the cautious approach the administration has taken with the budget, that, you know, an extra hundred or two hundred million dollars in Chapter Ninety money would obviously go a long way in our communities, but would also hit the budget a little bit too much for their liking. So we stand firm at two hundred million. There was a hearing in March, the Joint Committee on Transportation had it. On the tenth of April, it was reported out favorably, and it goes to house bonding. And basically, that would mean that based on the formula they used, Hingham would receive approximately seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars to use on, on public roadways.
And as always, we're very mindful of the fact that that money in your hands sooner than later is always beneficial, so that you can jump straight to your paving projects. The, I would just, it'll go through the process. I would expect, last year it came to the House floor during Budget Week, so I would expect we'll see that happen pretty expeditiously. It's, it's obviously not controversial, so although everyone does wish it were more. But, so you should see that come pretty quickly. And then, of course, the other big one is Chapter Seventy, which is the school funding. The, so in the Governor's Budget right now is basically five-point-one billion dollars. It's about two hundred million dollars increased over last year's levels. The aid is calculated based on a twenty-dollar increase to the per pupil. The House obviously had some increased funding as well in there, so the number is looking to be slightly more. And the House included a thirty-dollar per pupil increase. Josh Cutler, our representative colleague to South, has also filed an amendment to increase it to fifty dollars. I think, we'll see it be, stay at least in the House budget at thirty, but, but we are in there trying to get a little bit more to come to you. I will just, well, I was going to say, the number, sorry, flip over. We did include the, under the Governor's Budget, it would be about a two hundred thousand dollar increase to Hingham. Obviously, Chapter Seventy is under discussion for the foundation formula review. So you will, there's a series of bills that you'll see. The Governor put out his proposal, the House has a proposal, the Senate has a proposal. And they all are focused on each of the components, but they treat them somewhat differently. So under different proposals, you will see some different budget scenarios coming out in terms of aid. But I think the message, the takeaway message, is that both the House and Senate are committed to finding, to finding a way to fund that. You've already seen some of the money coming through the last budget and through the Governor's Budget and through the House Budget relative to offsets for health insurance, both for current teachers and retirees. I think that's probably one of the bigger nuts for us on our side. But at a minimum, under the House Budget, excuse me, under the, under the Governor's Budget, I mean, I think you can count on, at a minimum, this cycle as that legislation and the formula discussions develop.
Yeah, and education reform is definitely happening. It's just, everyone's at the table right now, the Governor has a proposal out there. The Senate and the House basically agreed to move it forward last legislative session. It got stalled in Conference Committee. I was actually one of the conferees, where we met for well over forty hours, basically in the waning days of legislative session, to try and come up with a solution for this. Unfortunately, it wasn't to be had. But basically, that, the, the message out of that was this next legislative session, we are absolutely going to reform education. And it's in four components, four kind of buckets. It's healthcare, English language learners, special education, and then economically disadvantaged school districts. So when we were looking at this, basically, they kind of put each school district into a certain decile. And they work back from these deciles to basically say where the appropriation, the correct appropriation of funds should go inside of the communities who experience the most economically disadvantaged children. And that's going to be, in my opinion, where a lot of the conversation with this is involved. I think that the other three buckets are kind of resolved, that health, health insurance, we've already made a commitment to. English learners has been amazing steps forward by the Look Act. We repealed basically the two thousand and two ballot question that mandated sheltered English immersion. And then the third part with special education, I mean, obviously, everyone wants to do as much as we possibly can, which actually leads to the next point, which is Circuit Breaker. And we were able to get the number from DESI today about what the Circuit Breaker reimbursement for this, this current fiscal year is going to be. And it's going to be seventy-four-point-two percent, which is obviously just point-eight percent below what we want it to be. But that's a real, a real commitment, in my opinion, that the state continues to make. Whereas in some years past, in, in previous administrations even, this has been a number that fluctuates way too much. And this number is obviously a huge driver of what the education budget's going to be. And that, with that said, it's also an eleven-point-two percent increase from last year. In the, in the proposed budget in the House, it's a three hundred and twenty-three-point-nine million dollars, which is dedicated to Circuit Breaker. And that number fluctuates as far as once we get the bills in and once we realize the actual costs of out-of-school placements.
So I guess the only other thing, we included a slide here that sort of laid out the Governor's proposal in terms of the education reform, so you can get a feel for where some of the numbers fall. I think that everyone, I think the House and Senate both agree that it will be something more. But we wanted to give you the baseline for what's happening, since that is an open question right now that will be debated next week at the budget session for the House. So, but it gives you a good feel for it. And I guess the only sort of thing I would say is, we did hear from all the school committees in our district, so you should be proud, even though, you know, a lot of the focus here would say be around children living in poverty that are economically disadvantaged. Obviously, that's not an issue for our particular district, but all of your school committees, it doesn't matter if none of the money comes to us, we need you to do the right thing to, to support children and their education across the Commonwealth and for equitable funding. So you should be very proud of your school district, of your school committee for, for weighing in in that regard. Patrick mentioned, Senator mentioned, the open question on one of the buckets was really around economically disadvantaged students. Just to illuminate the, I think one of the challenges has been how to count, because we used to count students relative to free and reduced lunch, but since a lot of schools don't even do that now, it's just sort of open. There's been some, some question about how to count how many kids, and then also some discussion about what's an appropriate number. So it's just all open for debate right now, but the commitment is there, and that's really the, the takeaway, is to build it structurally into the budget. Over time, I think everyone's looking at different end dates, but twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-six are usually the two dates that we talk about, and the commitment's there, so we just wanted to add that piece.
And then hopefully, we don't take another twenty-six years to revisit, to revisit education again. But then that's kind of where, you know, where we're at with that. And that, that will be, in my opinion, the biggest policy issue that we deal with this legislative session, that every district will have to tackle, is the, the implementation of new education reform, but it's primarily the financial component. And then the state has to find out where we also secure the new revenue to, to fund this. But I believe that there's opportunities out there in many different vehicles that are, that are looking good. And I think that Representative said it best, whereas when you look at what the Governor proposed, just as his budget always is, it's a baseline. You know, that's sort of the, the threshold, the low-end threshold of, of where the legislature is looking. So I think even with that as a low-end baseline, when you're talking about a hundred and thirty million dollars in new foundation aid, thirty million dollars to help municipalities cover health... out where we also secure the new revenue to, to fund this. But I, I believe that there's opportunities out there in many different vehicles that, that are, that are looking good, and I think that Representative said it best, whereas when you look at what the governor proposed, just as his budget always is, it's a baseline. You know, that's sort of the, the threshold, the low-end threshold of, of where the legislature is looking. So I think even with that as a, a low-end baseline, when you're talking about $130 million in new foundation aid, $30 million to help municipalities cover healthcare costs, another 13 for English learners, another 13 for economically disadvantaged, and 106 for charter schools, that's a pretty good baseline. There are some other, in my, in just, in talking with some of our colleagues from other states, there are some other states who are struggling to make ends meet, and we're talking about expanding and increasing the amount of money that we're dedicating towards education.
So it's pretty exciting. Oh, you can talk about-
Yeah, the unfunded pension liability is one of my things.
I'm gonna stick with the happy thoughts.
Yeah, no, so, so I mean, no, and we're doing well in this. I mean, DD's sort of, you know, OPEB and unfunded pension liability, I think, are the two biggest untalked-about drivers of municipal budgets and state budgets, and the state made a commitment in 1990. They weren't able to keep it unfortunately, but we're on the right path, whereas 1990, they thought we could pay it, pay our entire unfunded pension liability by 2028. Healthcare popped up in increasingly costly manner, and it was adjusted, and a schedule was put into place in 2017 with pension reform at the state level, and we're on pace right now to pay off our unfunded pension liability by 2036. Each year, we put in 8.9% increase. This year's budget proposes to transfer 2.84 billion to our state pension fund, which marks a $240 million increase over fiscal year 18. So again, when you're talking about a 1.5% increase to a $42 billion budget, and you look at the investments that we make towards education, the investments that we make towards unrestricted general aid to our communities, and then our investment that we're making into our liabilities, you can see that a lot of the money that, that we increase our budget by is caught up in those, those three sort of line items, but those are, in my opinion, and as well as the representatives, those are our priorities, whereas paying off our bills, making sure our communities are strong, and making sure that our K-12 system is, continues to be the best in the entire, the entire country, and gives all of the children of the Commonwealth an opportunity to do whatever it is they want to do, career technical education, military, two-year school, four-year school, whatever that may be, that that's our commitment at, at our level, and we know that that's yours as well here in Hingham.
It's about people, investing in our communities, investing in our, in people and services.
And we've done, we've done a, a little bit so far, just on a, a local basis. We've had a meeting with Jack McCarthy over at the Mass School Building Authority in regards to foster school, and we know and have been advocating for that for some time now. We were disappointed to see two rounds go by. We definitely don't want to see another one go by with this, with the school not being put on the list, so we're, we're working diligently on trying to, trying to make that happen, including a site visit that MSBA is going to make sometime in the next few months to, to foster school, which they did previously two years ago, but it's definitely, it's definitely time for them to see, you know, why this is an urgent need for the community.
And they do recognize, they recognize the need, they recognize that it's a good project, they recognize that Hingham does it right. They had only praise for the community, but it's the way that they run their program is, is year-to-year, and so you either make the threshold, or they wipe the slate clean and everybody starts again. So the, the problem is, is that there's a lot of unmet need out there, and you don't know who will be in the next bucket, who, who you'll be competitive against in the next, in the next round. Unfortunately, costs have gone up, projects are bigger, once they got kind of passed all of the elementary schools, some of these high schools are really big projects, and they don't have, it's not like libraries on a B-list, you know, where projects come off and projects come on. It's, it's within the annual cap. So there is a, a bill that got filed to increase the bond from 500 million to 750 million, which we signed on to, so we'll be advocating to increase the pot of money, so we're not just always fighting for the same money with the same communities, but really trying to increase. Again, it goes back to what we were talking about earlier, is the investments that the administration and legislature are making in our local communities so that you can do the work you need to do and educate students, so.
Well, and I, I just have to say, I, I attended that meeting on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, one of the things I really appreciated was how hard both of you worked to make sure that the right people were in the room to have the conversation, and while I agree with you, Representative, that the program is what the program is, I, I think one of the takeaways for me was they listened to us, they heard our story, they, you know, there was an indication that the statement of interest that we filed is a, is a good, solid statement of interest, they understand the story of that school and the importance of that building as a, as a community school, and I think that they recognize the support not only of the school committee, but of this board in, in advancing that project and securing funding for that. And, you know, I guess, again, for me, to be able to walk into the State House and know that the right people are in the room, because both of you have advocated on behalf of this community, is just beneficial to us, and, you know, I, I appreciate those efforts because without that, you know, it, it's hard to, hard to have your voice heard. So, you know, I think it's, it's, to me, just one example of that kind of work that you do behind the scenes to make sure that the community can advance its interests at the State House, and so, you know, conversations with, with leadership across the board, you know, has been helpful, and, you know, you pointed out here, you know, your communication with all of us on what, when, when monies may become available, what the priorities of the town are, you know, with the three of us, as well as with Tom. Again, you know, that, that access to our state resources and our state leadership, you know, we, we appreciate your efforts on that behalf.
Absolutely. So I think the only other thing we wanted to sort of add was that we were talking earlier about the, the foundation review and sort of think projects, things, big initiatives that didn't get quite across the finish line at the end, and as you know, everything resets and bills get refiled again with the beginning of the new legislative session, but we have seen the House and Senate very willing to just go right back to some of the things that didn't quite get across, and we just wanted to mention a few that happened to have, come up this past month. One was lifting the cap on kids, which is welfare benefits reform. You know, I think we all agree that what benefits go to a child shouldn't have to do with the birth order. That was one. LIHEAP, which is fuel assistance funding, the House and Senate, we voted $30 million, and I did just read that the administration released the first 19 million of that. So it's just an example of some of the programs and some of the legislative initiatives that have, that didn't quite make it last time around, and what you've seen is legislature going right back to it, having early hearings, really picking up where the discussion left off in last session, and really a commitment there to getting good policy work done, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think just to, just to add on to that, again, what's different, in my opinion, from what we do in Massachusetts and what is done elsewhere when it comes to government, is that bipartisan public policy is alive and well in Massachusetts, and I think that it leads towards a really strong government where you have conversations rather than arguments, and I really enjoy working with my colleague in order to achieve not only the goals for, for our communities, but for the Commonwealth.
And we're very lucky, we have a good South Shore delegation that works very collaboratively on all of our issues, on our shared issues, but also supporting in, in our own districts. So it's been, it's actually really been great, so.
That's great to hear.
I would, I would just, you know, say thank you for all that you do for the community. I actually think that there's a relationship between ed reform and the unfunded pension liabilities, because I think if those liabilities aren't taken care of and funded year after year, ed reform is going to suffer because those bills are going to be mounting, and, you know, there's, with, with ed reform, there are going to be some leaps of faith that have to happen, so if the rest of the fiscal house is in order, I, I think it makes it a little easier to make that leap. To me, the, the success of the ed reform is greater if everybody's pie gets a little bit bigger. My impression in the past is that without growing the pie, there was a little bit of reluctance to tackle ed reform because there was the fear that maybe my community would end up with less money than it has right now, and so I, I think, I think all the ingredients are in place for this to be successful and constructive, and I think that's really important because, you know, as you know, and you hear from the school committees and you hear from the superintendents, the number of unfunded mandates the communities face, particularly in education, is mounting, and, and I look at ed reform is, 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 you know, right now, we're in sort of a deficit, where for the last several years, we've just been, you know, hit with one mandate after another. To me, ed reform is getting us like to the, you know, to, getting us even. It's not getting us ahead, it's, it's, this is money that should have, that, that ideally the communities would have had access to as these mandates were coming up, it's catch-up. And it's, it's nice to hear the commitment, and hopefully, the work that was done last year sets the stage, and, you know, hopefully, it is a, hopefully, it's, it's a, it's a positive, a positive outcome. I, I would echo too that, that, you know, with, with the MSBA, I, I saw a thing in the paper the other day about projects that were awarded, and, you know, there, there was a high school that, it's, it's a $241 million high school is the one I remember, and, you know, that's, that's the state paying some, the community paying some. It's, it's a big school, I'm not, not suggesting it's, it's, you know, the good thing about the MSBA is they say, what do you need? And, you know, there are, there aren't a lot of bells and whistles, but to your point, the schools are expensive. You know, when, when the program started and East School was funded in 2008, I think 16, 16 schools were funded out of that $500 million. You know, I was looking at the list and going, wow, that, that one school with 241 million, there's not a lot of room for other schools, and I think it's, the state should be very proud of the program. It's obviously drawing more interest, but to, to your point, in the last 11 years, the costs of building schools has increased, and so it's more competition for those funds, and, and I'm sure there are many other communities who are in our circumstance where we've, you know, we're applied, we're hoping, but I, to, to me, part of ed reform, I'm, I'm glad that, you know, we're sort of looking at the MSBA as well. Maybe it's not $750 million in one year, you know, maybe it's $50 million over each of the next five years or something, I think, and any bit, any bit would help.
One thing I said to my successor is, make sure you keep the potholes filled, and to that end. I'm excited about the fact that we've submitted our design for the 3A corridor to the state, so we're, we're moving along there. We appreciate any support that either one of you could give us on that. I think we were well received for the collaboration we showed with the Town Hall, and to a lesser extent, GoHassit, so I'm hoping that that materializes in the next couple of years.
We're always happy to, well, any project that you have on the tip, as they, as it goes through the design-build process, we're always happy to either write a letter, to go with you, and advocate, and when you bring one of us with you, that means you get to jump to the front of the line as that first, so keep that in mind.
Good tip.
No, I know that's a longstanding public safety project for you and for the chief, so, and we're happy to, happy to support, happy to help out.
Anybody who would like to? Question, comment? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Before we go, we have one last item-
Of business?
-to take care of. That's you, Mr. Chairman.
Don't mind if we embarrass you just a little.
Do you want to go? Do you want to stand up, actually, Paul?
Come on.
Come over there, or?
Sure.
Yeah.
Mount.
Yeah, go into the middle. I want to be out of the way. What's that? Come on. Well, no, it was just that, that, you know, I know there's a tradition in Hingham of, no, or two terms on board, and that people do their time, and I say that as a, as a person, but in all seriousness, I think that, you know, you serve this to the Town of Hingham over the years in so many different capacities, and I'm sure you're not done, I'm sure you've just stepped back, and that we look back at doing for your community in the way you have always done it, and so we thought that it, since this was your last meeting, and you have it to be in here giving an update, we couldn't let them have passed without noting it, and so in honor of that, we did get citations from the House of Representatives for Paul Healy in recognition of your service on the Board of Selectmen and your continued dedication to the community of Hingham. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors, and I'm sure we'll all look forward to seeing what it is next that you, what your wife lets you next do. These really should be for the spouses, right? But it's signed to stay by Speaker DeLeo, myself, as your state representative, and Representative Jamie Murphy, we just wanted to say congratulations.
Thank you so much, Jamie.
And Paul, we did a, we did a resolution, you know, coming into the, the Senate in the special election, you've been nothing but kind, and you, you're, you truly are a gentleman, you know, and all-
As are you.
Oh, I appreciate that, but going to these events and going to these meetings and being able to hear you speak, I was really struck at one Eagle Scout recently, when you spoke to a gentleman who helped, helped out with the G A R Hall, and I think presented him a book. It's those, it's those little things that you do that really make a tremendous impact on this community, as well as all the big things, with your fingerprints being all over this community and all these good things that have, that have happened. So we, we did a resolution, and we actually put the word retiring in it, and we're told not to do that, because like, well, you know, you're gonna do something else. So we did service, but it's, it's a resolution congratulating you on your public service in the Town of Hingham, and it says, and we had this written to the record at the, in the Massachusetts State Senate, and it says, whereas Paul K. Healy of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hingham is retiring from that job, and recognizes service of more than 41 years of public service in the Town of Hingham, and whereas Paul Healy began his service of the town in 1978 as a member of the Hingham Police Department, wherein he rose to the rank of sergeant, and whereas after serving as a police officer in the town, Paul Healy was appointed to numerous committees, fine-tuning and sharing his extensive knowledge of the Hingham community, and whereas Paul Healy was first elected to the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Hingham in 2013, and serves as his chair for three years, and whereas the Board of Selectmen directly oversees the Town of Hingham's operations and governance, and whereas throughout his career in public service, Paul Healy has honorably served as a loyal steward and dedicated leader for the Town of Hingham, and on Tuesday, April 16, 2019, he will preside over his final Board of Selectmen meeting. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Massachusetts Senate extends its heartiest congratulations to Paul K. Healy on his retirement from a distinguished career in public service to the Town of Hingham, and further extends to him sincere best wishes for continued success, good health and happiness, and be it further resolved that a copy of these resolutions be transmitted forthwith, signed by Karen Spolka, Senate President, and myself, State Senator Patrick O'Connor. Paul, it's been an honor to do this, and I look forward to that as well.
Standing by, well, Bruce or Buffalo received this, and I really never thought this day would come, but here it is, so, thank you, thank you both. Appreciate that, Paul. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for that. We're gonna continue on. Next on the agenda is the merchants' parking lot discussion. Nope, so, so Michelle will probably walk you through the nuts and bolts of this.
All right, so if I could direct your attention to the aerial map, we have a merchants' parking lot in your packets. Merchants' parking lot is the lot that's located behind 29 Main Street, and it stretches from Main Street over to Central Street. It is a private lot that's currently owned by BJ Selenco and her sister, and BJ's here with us tonight.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for coming.
And the town's ability to use this lot as a municipal parking lot is governed by a 2002 license agreement with the owners, that states that the town shall take custody and control of the premises for municipal parking purposes, and will keep and maintain the premises for those purposes. So the town has been working for about the last year and a half or so with Ms. Selenco to try to develop and execute, execute a plan to undertake- to try to develop and execute a plan to undertake some maintenance of the lot since no significant maintenance of the lot has been done in the last 20 years or so. So as part of that broader plan to do some crack sealing and place a top coat over the lot and re-stripe it, we've been talking with the owner and have, with engineering staff, developed this plan that you're looking at. The request that's before the board tonight is when we undertake this re-stripping of the lot is to designate 12 parking spaces that sort of butt the edges of Ms. Selenco's building and reserve those for tenants of her building only. As part of this plan, last fall or in about August or so, at the owner's request, the town issued parking placards for the tenants, the five businesses that are in 29 Main Street, which would allow them to park in the lot without restrictions. They wouldn't be subject to the three-hour parking limit. In working with Ms. Selenco, we've been trying to balance the town's desire to maintain as many spaces as possible for municipal parking with the owner's responsibilities to provide some spaces for her tenants. Those placards that we issued replaced older placards that were issued around in 2001, I believe, or before.
I think it was when the merchant, we had an agreement with the merchants' association.
Right, those were given to members of the broader downtown business association. So what's happened for many years is tenants of businesses in the general area have been parking in that lot all day and we're trying to sort of come up with a plan here that frees up as many spaces as possible for the public but also addresses the concerns of the owner's tenants.
First of all, I'd like to thank you very much for your generosity, for allowing the town to use it as public parking. You know, it's something I think some people just take for granted and we don't.
Yeah, I think a lot of people think that we are taking something away from the town and I'm saying, "No, no, we are here, what is good for the Town of Hingham is good for our tenants and that's really good for us."
Thank you.
So it's got to be a win-win for everybody. But because of the change of the, the change of the types of businesses that are coming to the center of town, it's, my tenants come at 8:00 in the morning, there's no spaces for them and then people are there all day long. I mean, people are parking there all day and then going somewhere else. So we have to, we have to figure, we have to figure that out. That's what we're trying to do.
And at Chief Olson's suggestion, these 12 designated spaces would be restricted to tenant parking only during the hours of 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM daily so that folks could park there before and afterwards.
How has, has the informal practice, which are the signs that, the signs that are existing, has that helped?
Those just recently, very recently went in.
Okay.
We just put those up and that's what we're kind of talking about tonight, which is, we want to make sure that that's.
And these are shared, they look like shared placards among the tenants?
So each tenant, so we have every number of the AR numbers.
They've been assigned to the businesses, not to the individual employees to be shared among.
Just so that the audience at home can hear what you're saying, would you be kind enough just to go over the mic so we can?
Thank you.
Get the explanation on the air.
Usually we're a pretty bellowing voice, most people here. Just ask my kids.
And so is the idea then with formalizing this, having placards in place, that the police could then ticket folks who are violating this?
That is correct.
So it's, we can't really do it now because it's not properly striped, we don't have a kind of organized approach to it, but then you'd be able to check to make sure that the people who are parking in the spot have the tenant placard? Is that the?
Correct, yeah. We want to make sure that, the only way the center of Hingham survives is if people come to the center of Hingham to do their shopping and their businesses. If merchants are parking there all day long or if electricians are parking there, which they have been all day long, then there's no spaces for people to come and go. So that's, that's our concern.
But by the same token, you need your tenants to have certain access.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
You know, one of the things that, I'm sure counsel will agree with me on this one, when we were working on developing the shipyard as well as South Hingham, we wanted to preserve the vitality of the square and we realize how delicate it is. So I can truly respect what you're trying to accomplish here and think that it's entirely reasonable, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Michelle, can you, are there spots on the, as you're looking at the drawing, on the right side, it looks like there's some doubled up spots there?
There are some tandem spots there and that's sort of formalizing an informal practice by her tenants already, so Ms. Selenco thought in here sort of give the quote-unquote crappy spots along.
Crummy spots. Let's give the crummy spots to the tenants, right? Because let's give the better, the better spots to the people who are coming in.
That's a slight.
It is, yep, yep, but you know what? Let's use whatever we can, right?
Absolutely.
And has the Downtown Association been made aware of this, just so everybody knows?
So we started conversations about this two years, no, two years ago, August.
You're being generous, yes.
As always.
Well, I have to say, I mean, I do have to say, you know, Chief Olson, who I always call Officer Olson, so sorry, I always demote him every time I speak to him. But Chief Olson and Tom and Michelle and Lynn Barclay, everyone's kind of been, and Corey Farina, I mean, I can't tell you the numbers of people that have really worked generously together to try to make, slowly together but generously together to make this all work. And I really do think that if we're able to enforce this and we're able to, that I really think that it's going to make a difference in terms of, of the, you know, center being, really be able to be used the way it's supposed to be used. I think it's going to make some people who have been parking there all day long pretty unhappy, but it's really, I think, for the benefit of the town. And we continue to be, my sister and I continue to be very, very committed to continuing this. You should pray for our long lives because we are committed to this.
Well, and I like, I like the notion that DPW is going to be down there making some improvements and doing some seal coating, because I also think that, you know, clear demarcation of where the, where the spots are will be helpful as well.
Yeah. The town, I'm blocking on the engineer's name, but he had also.
Roger Fernandez.
Who was it?
Roger Fernandez.
Yeah, yeah, he was terrific and we were trying to figure out if we could just eke out a few more, you know, to try, and I think we got rid of a dumpster from, that somebody was using. So I think we've got a few more spaces than we had before.
Well, you've worked really hard on this and as Paul said, you know, we appreciate the commitment to the square, for sure.
Yeah, and then finally, I just, you know, and I think, I have to say that Chief Olson has said, you know, "Look, we don't want to ticket people if they're, you know, if they're not really aware." So I still do think that we should maybe, you know, and this is a front of discussion, to, you know, give maybe in the beginning, people some warnings before giving them tickets, right? Like you don't want, you know.
Socialize it, for sure.
Yeah, like, let's get another, another, something in the newspaper maybe, just, you know. I called a number of the local owners in the neighborhood, so I think we've done it.
Done what you can do, right? Yeah.
And Lynn has been involved from the Downtown Association from the beginning with me and Betty and now me and Michelle.
Okay.
So, do you have any questions at all or? We're open to being, you know, I think Tom and Michelle and Chief Olson, we're all very flexible. So if this works out, excellent. If it doesn't, we're just going to come back and we're going to fix it again until it works, so.
I like that attitude.
It seems, it seems, it seems like a really appropriate step and I think it's just an example of how, you know, we all, we all have a common goal here and, you know, keeping that in mind helps us figure out, you know, what a good step is. And I just wouldn't let, if you put those signs up, I wouldn't let it go too long without, you know, if you've got, if you've got, if you've got, if you've got some violators in there, you know. I know sometimes when I always see those signs, I wonder, okay, are they, are they really ticketing or, you know, are those just kind of signs to scare me? I think, I think, don't let too much time elapse because.
Look at him.
He's got his, he's got his ticket book.
Easy target.
I will also say that, you know, with the opening of the Heritage Museum, which, you know, we all knew was going to draw traffic to the square, it's, it's bringing some vitality, but with it comes the challenge of, of parking for everybody.
This is the, this is the second time tonight we're addressing the economic vitality of downtown, of the square and it's a wonderful project.
It's all good, yeah.
That's great.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your patience with us.
Thank you guys very much, yeah.
I move that in accordance with Section 3 of the license agreement dated October 15, 2002, the board approved the designation of 12 parking spaces in the merchants' parking lot as shown on a plan entitled Merchants' Parking Lot Designated Parking Plan dated April 16, 2019 for tenant use only during the hours of 8:00 AM through 7:00 PM.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on with a couple of appointment votes we're going to do and this is something that's done annually, so at this point, entertain a motion to reappoint the following personnel as special police officers for the Town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2020. Raymond Abrew, Leslie Badger, Ken Corson, Joe Driscoll, Daniel Goldstein, Max Goldstein, Jay Candrehan, David Horton, Robert Mansfield, Mike Kew, Mike Murray, Kevin Newian, John Nikitis, John Norris, Michael Bacham, Mitch Powers, Mike Riley, Charlie Southard, Jimmy Taylor, Russ Way, Jim Wells, Brian Willett.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to appoint the following officers as court prosecutors and backups for Hingham District Court for a term ending April 30, 2020. Hall PD, Officer Mike Flaherty, Detective Daniel Dunn. Hanover PD, Sergeant Daniel Salvucci. Sergeant Timothy Kane. Rockland PD, Officer Sean Brundage. Officer Jeffrey Durenzo. Officer Joseph Solinsky. Situant PD, Sergeant Ken Bates. Sergeant James Bullman. Sergeant James Gil Martin. Detective Owen Kirkbride. Norwell PD, Sergeant William Pastorez.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion to appoint the following detectives as agents for the Board of Selectment to enforce the laws of the Liquor Control Act and the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, regulations for all licensed liquor establishments in the Town of Hingham for a term ending April 30, 2020. Detective Sergeant Phil Emmett. Detective Phil Tracy. Detective Dan Leary.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes the business of the board for April 16, 2019. As we customarily do, we go around, it'll, Michelle, I want to thank you for the work you did on the merchants' lot. I thought that went really smooth and it was good to get that behind us.
Well, Mr. Healy, since it's your last meeting, I just want to say it's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with you. I'm really grateful that my career in Hingham started under the guidance of this board. You have an incredible record of service with the community and I appreciate the time you took with me to take me on a tour of town and try to share your, some of your knowledge of the town's history and character and culture with me. I will definitely miss your particular flavor of stewardship and statesmanship here. But I wish you well on your next adventure. I think it will not be too far from us and yes, just thank you for everything.
Thank you. Thomas?
You know, I said it earlier and I won't get into mushiness today, but Paul, you're an outstanding selectman, outstanding steward of this town, you love this town. You've made sure that I learned a lot of what I need to know about what this town is and what it means to you and to its residents. The town is better for you having lived in it and for having you, you having served it. I'm a better town administrator for you being in my life and I'm a better person for you being my friend, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Wow, I don't know how to follow that one. You know, except to say, it's just really been an honor and a privilege to serve on this board. I think that we've worked hard and well together. I think we bring uniques, unique set of expertise and unique skillsets and unique views to the table and you have always impressed me in terms of your preparation, your candor, your guidance, your thoughtfulness. And the one thing I have to say is, in every measure of yourself, you act in the best interests of this town and that example is something that I will strive to continue to try to live up to. You, you have been a mentor, whether you know it or not, not only to this board, but I think to committees and commissions with whom you interact, both in this town and in others. And I've just been so, so proud to be affiliated with you and this board, so thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much.
So with all of this, I'm, I'm a little bit of a loss for words, which it has been an honor and a privilege to sit next to you for four years. It is hard for me to think about doing this job without having you sitting next to me, but I've learned so much from your example, not just what you do, but how you do it, that there's going to be a little, a little bit of Paul Healy in, in hopefully my continued service to the town. And I, I think Hingham is just so fortunate to have dedicated volunteers and the Healy family and is, is just an example for all of us. And that's not just you, but that's Esther who served so well on, on the school committee. It's the example that you've set for your children who are, you know, in the community and doing things in the community. And the Healy family reminds us that this town is really built on volunteers and, and I'm so grateful for the opportunity to, you know, to work with you and it will be fun to walk by 209 Main Street during the Fourth of July parade. But, you know, Paul, thank, thank you and Esther, thank you for, for your generosity of, of time and commitment. You've, you've definitely made this town better and we're just so grateful.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, I was a kid when I started my relationship with the Town of Hingham. I worked for Herbie Cole, later went on to work for Ray Campbell. It was irritated development that Tom Hastings did, so I ran for planning board and 19 years later Laura Burns asked me to take her place, so here I am. I've worked with a ton of good people, truly committed to the town. I've sat on some great boards, none finer than the one I'm on right now. You know, I honestly don't think that the water company issue would have reached the point it has without the committed effort of my colleagues on either side of me, the hard work of our town administrator, assistant town administrator. There's, there's a lot of people that, you know, I'm grateful for, for working so well with me and having a sense of humor about some of my quirks and ways. You know, serving the town is contagious and, you know, to me, this has been a labor of love. I have truly enjoyed it. I've tried to pass that sense of contribution to my children, some of whom serve their country as we speak. We live in a great town, ladies and gentlemen. We, we have something special here. This is a place where people want to come to live and, you know, the work of town government is part of what makes that happen. And, you know, I feel that, you know, it's appropriate for me to make room for a successor so that, you know, the board stays healthy and grows. Mary and Karen will do a fine job with their new colleague, serving the community in a way that, you know, I continue to remain impressed by and with. They are high-speed, let me tell you. And I, I want to thank, you know, my wife who, this is the first time she's ever come to a meeting. 25 years. She says it's not true, but I think it is. I could have never have done this without her support. You know, at one point when I was on the planning board and she was on the school committee, we were out multiple evenings each week and we had some rather spirited discussions about town governance and it's good. So I won't go on. I, I look forward to seeing you at town meeting. I really do and I hope that people come out with a full appreciation of how important this water company question is. Delay is not our friend out there. Delay is not our friend out there, ladies and gentlemen. I'm leaving you with that last message. If you see that starting to occur in this meeting, I want your antennas to go up, please. You know, I've seen a lot of mischief along the way, so I won't state it any further, but what we're advocating, what we're proposing, whether we do it in the public forums, or I wave to you at the dump as you go by, we would not do this if this wasn't for the best interests of this community. And when my grandchildren's grandchildren look back, I want them to say that their great-great-grandfather made the right move on this issue. And I hope that you'll join me in that, truly, I do. This is the right thing for this community, and we can rise above all the noise that the corporate opponent seeks to impose on us and see with clarity. You've been presented this issue in very clear terms. We've had some very, very bright people speak to this. It's been thoroughly vetted by your fellow residents in this community on boards that we place great confidence in. And, you know, you will hear it, even if you come to the meeting without having a full understanding of the issues, you're going to hear it again on Monday night. So, I ask you to support us in this. We need a two-thirds vote. You know, as a member of the planning board, you know, we routinely did two-thirds votes over the years on zoning articles, and sometimes they were opposed, but, you know, never with the kind of ferocity that we've seen, whether it's through, you know, paid canvassers that are hitting our neighborhoods, full-page ads in the Hingham Journal, a newspaper I once loved. You know, this is real, and I just urge you not to be distracted by all the smoke and mirrors that are coming from the opposition on this issue. So, with that, I'll bid you farewell. This is my last time that I'll be in this seat, but it has been an honor and a privilege to serve you in behalf of the town of Hingham. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.